Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, May 12th, 2025. Before we get started, as previously mentioned, in accordance with the Governor's 2025 Extension, these meetings will be virtual/hybrid open meetings through June 30th, 2027. Yeah, at 7:00 PM, we'll commence with a roll call. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet? Margaret, you're muted. There you go.
Sorry, here.
Here, and we have Hila Rosa?
Here.
Lori Ann Miller?
Yes.
Nick Saicopatis here. All right. Tonight's administrative items, number one, site plan review is 1402 Tucker Road. We've all heard some of it before. I'm not sure if Lori has or not, but perhaps Dan, you can get us started?
Sure. This is submitted under application PSPR 24-7. It is a site plan review for proposal to convert an existing barn into office space in a yoga studio at 1402 Tucker Road, also known as Assessors Map 167 Lot 95. Back in September of 2024, the ZBA granted a special permit to allow for impervious lot coverage to be expanded from 30.9% to 43.2%, and also allow the use to be dictated in the barn as office space and yoga studio. The applicant is requesting one waiver. This is from Section 24.3 of 2 for gravel parking. Parking spaces less than 20 are allowed to have gravel or shell services. The parking facility as a whole is 29. So this would just state that waiver request, 17 of those spaces, as proposed, will be in the gravel area. We did receive a clean letter from the DPW. They reviewed these plans for all their requirements. We received a letter dated 4/30/25 addressing that. All concerns they sent to the applicant have been addressed. They are only recommending one condition of approval. That condition being final stamped as built plans and calculations in both hard copy and digital format shall be submitted to the Town of Dartmouth Planning Department and the DPW Engineering Division and approved within 30 days of completion and prior to any DPW sign-offs on certificates of occupancy. The plan shall also contain a certification by an engineer and land surveyor that the location shown on the plan represent the locations as constructed. I had had a few conversations with a design engineer. The only other concern I had, the parking facility is a redevelopment site, so there are some limitations as to area and what could be done. So the applicant is proposing underground drainage for the parking facility. The site plan review process requires street trees to be planted between the parking facility and abutting properties, the way they, this design is shown. The trees will be located very close to the underground drainage facility, which could, should, could cause some concern with root infiltration into the system. So I talked to the design engineer about that, and I believe he's here to, to discuss that situation as well as any other questions the board might have. So at this point, I would recommend turning it over to a design engineer so he can present his project.
All right. Thank you, Dan, and absolutely. Let's move forward with the engineer.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Tom Morris with Zen Consulting Engineers. So am I able to share my screen?
You see TV will make sure of that, I believe.
It'd be all set, Tom.
Okay.
If you have access.
Yep, looks like I do. All right, so just to go right to what Dan was talking about with the, with the trees, this is our landscaping plan. And you can see we have a swale along this property line here that connects around to a infiltration basin. And we have several trees around the perimeter here that are on the slope here to the, to the basin and the, the swale, and then close to this underground drainage field here as well. So we talked to the landscape architect, and he had no concern with being on the slope or being in a wet area as far as the plant survivability. And then one thing we had come up with that we could do to help limit root infiltration is put a liner along the stone. So I think it's either, basically, it's, it's that, or we could ask for a waiver on some of the trees and and get rid of these if, if you guys think those are a big concern for longevity of the drainage.
Was there anything else, Tom, to add, or do you want us to discuss that at this point?
Yeah, we can go over that. I mean, I think, is everyone familiar with the project?
I think we, we've got at least one relatively new person on the board. I think it might be worthy to, to review the whole project.
Sure. All right, let me get back up to the top here. So this is the locust map, just so you can kind of see where it is. Tucker Road, very close to Route 6 here. I think these are a couple lots that face Route 6. And then there's one lot that faces Tucker Road with a second lot down. So this is the existing, we have the existing salon up front with a split entrance that comes into the parking area. We have some green space out back where there's an existing underground drain field. A couple catch basins contribute to that. And then this is the existing barn that we're proposing to convert. Right now, it's, it's in pretty bad shape. They're looking to essentially rebuild the whole thing. They'll be keeping small components of it and then rebuilding it. So here's the layout. We're proposing to change this entrance because right now it, it doesn't function very well. Those, both barrels of this double-sided entrance and exit are very narrow. Even when you're coming in with a relatively small vehicle, you almost have to swing out to be able to come in. And beyond that, this, this section of the existing parking lot is going to remain untouched outside of utility trenches, but the layout will stay the same. Where this entire area here is being reconfigured, losing some pavement and then gaining the parking in the back. And right along this line is where we're proposing the gravel from here back, these 17 spaces. Actually, it's, yeah, 17. And then the barn will become office and a yoga studio up, up top on the second story. So to go along with these improvements, like Dan said, we got a a special permit from ZBA for the lot coverage. We had to do drainage improvements to make sure that we weren't going to flood anything out, increase any runoff off the site. And actually, this site is kind of a, a bowl. It's a low spot for the surrounding lots. So we're taking some runoff from the abutters and infiltrating it into our, our drainage system. Nothing's actually leaving the site. So we have a two-tiered drainage, subsurface drainage field. This one a little bit higher up with larger chambers. This one a little bit lower down. And that's just because the, the water table varies slightly as you come down the slope here. And then we have the open infiltration basin with the swale that I pointed out before. And like Dan said, this has gone through review with DPW. It's had quite a few things we've gone back and forth on. But I think ultimately it's a, it's a good design. Little crowded, but it definitely works. So this is just the utilities. We're going to be having a new sewer and water service coming back to the barn that's being converted. That's, that's essentially it with, with the utilities. Everything up front on the existing salon is going to stay the same. The only thing that we're disturbing is the existing drain field back here is going to go away and be replaced with all the, the other drainage structures. So during construction, there will be temporary anti-tracking pads to keep silt from going out into Tucker Road. We'll have silt sock around the perimeter of the, the site and along the bottom of the basin here to help keep silt from clogging up the infiltration basin and having problems in the future. And then we have our details, which are all mostly town standards. And then we get into, we have our, our lighting design, which shows that we're not spilling anything over onto the abutting lots, and we're providing the required two-foot candles on each of the, the new spaces. The, the existing building has some, some lighting on it, which is not shown in the foot candle ratings that are on, on this, because they're not really something that the lighting people could certify because it's an existing fixture. And then back to the, the landscaping. Like I said, we have kind of two options depending on how you feel about it. We could do the liner around the stone to try to help keep the roots out, and we, we feel that that could be appropriate, and the landscape architect said that's not a problem for the plants. Or if you think it's going to be a problem, we could ask for a waiver on some of these plantings. And that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Um, thank you. Board, how do we feel, or what's our pulse?
I have a question. I would not, I would rather not take any chances on trees, seeing how we've had problems with the trees where we, we planted in the past with sidewalks and the, the roots destroying them. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I think strategically, we could plant a couple of trees, but I don't, I'm not, you know, over necessarily having trees there. But my main question is, um, office space. And the yoga is going to be on top, and the office space is going to be on the bottom. In the past, I've seen, um, the lawn company parking their vehicles back there. Is that going to, is that going to continue?
I don't believe so. I think right now that's happened because they have a little bit of extra space out in the back there in that green area and.
So the lawn business will not be in there?
Not, that's not the plan.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
I just have a question on office hours and what hours will this be open and closed, only because you're close to State Road, you're close to Dunkin' Donuts, and it gets really busy there certain times of the day, the traffic.
Yeah.
Get a backup all the way up to Tucker Road. So what, what, what are the hours of operation, which I can't see? I'm sorry, they're too small.
Okay. Yeah, they're, they're listed here. So Salon L is the hair salon.
Okay.
I believe there's no proposed change. I believe this is how they're open now.
What does that say, 1 to 8?
So it's, yeah, so Tuesday, Tuesday, 1 to 8, Wednesday, Thursday, 9 to 8, Friday, 9 to 6, Saturday, 8 to 3, and Sunday and Monday are closed. The office hours are fairly similar.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm just a little concerned, just, just because the traffic that backs up there. Have they, have they given any thoughts to that?
So we did talk to ZBA about the traffic. And I'm sorry, I can't remember the name.
That's okay, because that's, that's the ZBA, this is planning.
Sure.
Two different boards.
So the discussion was essentially that this is a small operation that's being proposed, and the impact on the traffic is going to be essentially negligible. And the, the name I can't remember on the ZBA, the board member, is a professional engineer as well. So he kind of understood both sides of it, and he was saying that he did, he wasn't concerned with the traffic.
Okay, so you, you really, just kind of a hope and a dream, really, there's been no study or anything done because it is a small project.
Right. Yeah, and we do understand there is a lot of traffic going through there. I went to UMass Dartmouth, so I've, I've seen it. There's quite a bit in that area.
It's an, it's an awful jam sometimes because then people can't get into Dunkin' Donuts, and they don't move, and you know, you can be in line 15, 20 minutes waiting to get to Tucker, you know, get from Tucker Road to Route 6.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Margaret, I'd, I'd like to share just with everybody, including Tom. Conceptually, we could look at the added parking spaces and the square footage and think of its impact. Obviously, it's going to have a measurable impact. If it's meaningful or not, it's different, but it's going to be measurable to some degree. But so is the operation of the salon. If, if they didn't blow dry and they only did cuts, and they had people in and out of there every 30 minutes, then that impact would be double of what it is compared to a standard salon, so. But my gut is, regardless of what the impact is between yoga, which is a slow-based thing, probably turns over maybe on the hour or in hourly increments, and small office space, I can't see it having an impact that maybe the average driver's going to feel. I agree, it's going to be measurable if someone did a study because there are added vehicles and so on. But it would be a lot different if it was 30 to 50 vehicles turning over every 15 to 30 minutes, so. And I, and I hate, as a board member, I hate to take the result of what's happening on Tucker Road and leverage it on their shoulders and against them, when what's happening on Tucker Road is the sum of a bunch of prior events. Rather it be homes being built out to the south and/or the need to get to Dunkin' Donuts. So I, I'm curious what the rest of the board feels about this.
I think if they're taking a right-hand turn, going, going south on Tucker Road, it's not going to be a big problem because they, when the light is red or at the other end, they can take the right-hand turn, and I, I've never seen a problem in taking rights. It's the left-hand turn where they could have a problem because I've seen traffic backed up to Friends Academy on, you know, when school's getting out. So that's the only way they're going to have a problem is taking a left.
Anyone else?
I, I just see, given the occupancies that we're talking about, and Nick, you alluded it to it as well, you know, the yoga being in hourly increments and the increased traffic, I mean, to echo what's already been said, it's likely to be measurable. I, I just don't have a sense that the volume of it is going to be that much more impactful.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything really so much to, to talk about in terms of the, the traffic flow or other than the fact that it, it, it's a congested area to begin with. My main concern is the property is entirely in the third zone of the Aquafor Overlay Protection District, and it is a, potentially a strong pitching wedge away from Zone 2. The Pascomansett River runs right to the west of this property. How or why this, the, the, the ZBA granted an extension of impervious surface to this property? I have no idea. I, I don't think that should have ever happened, but not, that's unfortunately not our decision here that we're, we're having to deal with somebody else's output. Given that we don't have a choice in, 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 in making that decision that's already been made for us, I, I, I do look to make the best out of a, what I, I would call a borderline troubled parcel. I, I, I agree with, with Lori that I would rather see no trees because the drainage is going to be vitally important. And, you know, sometimes drainage systems goes, go in and, and sometimes they last for a real long time, and sometimes they don't. This is, this is in a vital area, and it, we have to do everything that we can that is, that is within our, our, our power to, to help make the best out of this difficult situation. So the, I agree with the, the, the trees giving some relief on, on the, the tree requirement on the south side of this parcel or, or any, any place that, that, that the trees would abut closely to the drainage system. And that, that's, I, I mean, there's, there's not much more else that, that we have really to talk about. You know, I, 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 I have, I I, I, I don't think that this, this much of an extension of impervious surface, regardless of, of what kind of systems you put in, should, should, it, it just shouldn't have happened.
Thank you, Kevin.
To Chair, if I can?
Of course.
Just some comments. I, for remembering the, the initial discussion on this project, I do appreciate that we didn't just go in and asphalt this entire site to death. I certainly appreciate the gravel solution more than that. To that thought, are there any best practices that the project is taking into account to limit the amount of gravel loss or how to contain the gravel to the site? And that it will remain doing the job it's intended to do? Tom, I guess that question's for you.
Yeah. We are, we're proposing vertical granite curbing around the entire thing. So it's not going to migrate. And if it does, you'll have quite a bit of time to be able to see six inches of buildup before you get to the top of the curb and remedy that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Regarding the trees, Dan, I'm going to ask you on this, regarding this, this option for a liner, do you see that as a reasonable alternative to not having trees?
In my opinion, I'd rather see the trees not be there. The liner will work for a little bit. Roots get around liners as well. So if, in, in, in my opinion, I would rather see the trees removed, but it is a requirement of, of Article 24 for landscaping. So that is a decision the board would have to make on situations like this for redevelopment. What would the priority be? And if you're asking my opinion, I would say to, to remove at least two or three of those trees.
And when, just for clarity's sake, Dan, when you say remove, you mean remove from the plan?
Remove from the plan, yes, yes. Take, they have enough trees to meet all the other requirements, the, the, the different, the different requirements for number of trees, number of different variety of trees. So this plan could be revised. Maybe one of the tree in the middle goes to the middle between the two drainage, then you remove a couple, and then that kind of takes you out of any, out of any situation where you're going to have to worry about that root intrusion.
Then I'll, I'll certainly endorse that as well, my fellow board members. Last thing from me, Tom, do you know if the, if the plans have been reviewed with the building inspector or the Building Inspection Services Office?
He has definitely looked at them, and I think he had a few fairly recent comments, one of them being the, the striping between the buildings. So I know he has definitely reviewed it.
And he does, and we don't have any feedback of any alterations required of the building plans as presented in the packet?
As far as I understand, the architecials weren't... I can't remember now if there was an updated set.
Is this a tear down or just to enhance it?
So it is definitely extensive work to rehab the building. I believe, I don't know exactly how the building permit would work if they're required to keep a portion of it or, or what. But I know they're working with them to make sure they do it the right way.
Well, as, as I interpret it, based on the fact that, that the architectural plans include existing conditions with the shell of the building intact, and then I'm looking at the proposed plans that appear to keep the shell intact and fit out the interior spaces only. I assume that a good portion of the structure itself is going to remain, again, just based on the plans that were submitted. And I'll review accordingly, I guess.
Yeah, I know the, the intent, the intent certainly was keeping the footprint of the building exactly the same. There's no alteration of that. But in terms of what structurally is staying and going, I'm not 100% sure. And they might not even know until they actually get into it and see the condition of all the, all the wood that's in there.
No, nothing else for me. Go ahead.
No, that's.
Sorry, I was just closing out. So do you, you don't have any, any, any plans set for what this building, the structure is going to look like?
So we do have an architectural plan. Let's see the most recent one.
There, there is, there are elevations in the packet, Kevin.
Yeah, so this is existing. You see, there's a, this is on the side that faces the salon. There's a barn door. And then this is the left-hand side that faces kind of into where the gravel parking will be.
But that's existing.
Right, that's existing. And what's going to happen is they're going to replace the barn door with a couple standard doors, one going into kind of a, a stairwell and one going into the office space. They're adding some stairs with a door up into the yoga studio on the second floor. And then you can see here the doors that they're doing, the steps up. A new window on the back of it. But this is, this is as much as I've seen about how the building is actually being rehabbed. I just know from being out there that the existing structure is in pretty rough shape.
Tom, can I chime in for a moment?
Sure.
I hate to go backwards, but I just want to respect Margaret's concern, go back to the plan with the parking. And in the best interest of the town, can you make it clear to us how many parking spaces this plan is proposing as additional as it relates to the yoga office project, separate and distinct from what exists now for the salon? I, I want to be able to answer that question if someone asks me, and I also want to process that thought.
Yeah. So here's our, our breakdown of what's required.
It would be 19 new spaces, right?
So I have to look, we don't have it listed right here, how many are actually there. So 17 was required for the salon. So there are nineteen, twenty, twenty existing spaces. And we're, we're losing some here and reconfiguring. So it's not the seventeen that we're adding in the back of the gravel is not in addition to what's already there. Because there's some reconfiguration.
Well, the, the ones that you just showed me that you're reconfiguring though, you're reconfiguring from the gravel line to, um, are, aren't you moving those over the way your cursor is now?
So these on the back are going away and being kind of added into the gravel area. But we have some reconfiguration here too. Um, I believe there's four or five existing spaces here. And there's only going to be the two handicap spaces here now, uh, proposed. So it's twenty-nine spaces, so it's nine more than existing.
That's what I counted as well. It's, it's a net increase of nine.
Right.
Okay. Well, I think we have, um, a lot to consider. And I'm not sure that talk, well, I mean, I, I guess we could do this, just, just to get it out of the way. Um, does someone want to make a motion on the tree waiver or not, just so we can get beyond that? We seem to be in common ground.
I, I, I will, I, I don't know whether it's a, uh, a motion or not, but, uh, i- if it was requested, I, I would grant a waiver to, uh, of, of that requirement. I would, I would vote to, to grant that waiver. Uh, and I do have a follow-up question there. Dan, who's responsible for, uh, making sure that, that these drainage systems? Uh, in the future are, uh, are, are functional and, uh, carrying out the purpose for which they're intended?
The, the engineer as part of his package has a, a maintenance, a facility maintenance plan. That outlines what needs to be done, um, at different stages, um, yearly, monthly, whatever it needs to be, that's included with the packet. Um, and Tom, if you can correct me, I believe it's the property owner is listed as, as who will be responsible for the facility maintenance, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Um, and then even just to further that. I'm not sure if it was a zoning requirement or it was under the planning board regulations. But the, uh, the maintenance is required to be logged and provided to the building inspector, uh, annually. Um, a report on the condition, any maintenance that has happened, um, if any repairs had to be done, things like that. And I believe that the, as part of the ZBA, um, discussions. The owner has entered an agreement with another engineer who will be, um, doing inspections. And providing the reports to the town.
And it, who, whose responsibility is it if these reports never show up? Is it zoning enforcement or?
I believe he's the one, um, that can enforce it, yes. And I'm not sure what the enforcement, what the power of the enforcement is.
Well, to answer your question, Nick, uh, I know I kind of changed the topic a little bit there, but, uh, I just had some, some follow-ups, but, uh, I, I would be willing to make a motion if that's the appropriate way to handle it. That, that we offer a waiver, or, or I guess if Tom asked for a waiver, I would, I would vote to, uh, to, to, to endorse that waiver of, uh, the, the trees that abut. Uh, any of the, uh, drainage systems, particularly the.
All right, no, no, go ahead. It was broken up. Go ahead.
Particularly the, the, uh, four in the south. Uh, west corner.
Just, just to interrupt, Dan, don't they have to request a waiver? On the plans or, uh, ha, ha, request a waiver before we can do this?
Yes, yeah, they, they, they would request that waiver if that's, if that's what the path they, they choose. We could, the board could tonight, um, vote for administrative, administrative approval based on granting of the, the waiver for the gravel parking. And the proposed waiver for the parking facility. The landscaping and also the condition as outlined, um, in the DPW approval letter.
So really quick, Margaret, um, and Dan, I, I agree with both of you. And I use the bad word between waiver and bad words between waiver and motion. Just trying to share with him the sentiment of the board over those trees, which so far I think we're in favor of granting relief if it's asked for. But before we go any further. Am I the only one that feels a little bit troubled by the overall burden? And as it relates to aquifer concerns and number of parking spaces relative to the space? Where are the rest of us on this? And I also feel like we're coming in on Monday morning. I don't know how much there is for us to say, just being transparent.
Was approved by the Board of Appeals, wasn't it? Yes, it was approved, the forty, was it forty-three percent? It was approved by the ZBA. So we have no choice to say anything about the aquifer. The lock coverage because ZBA granted them relief.
Right.
That, yeah, that, I, my sentiment is, is with, uh, with Margaret and, and you, Nick, that. But, you know, we, we're, we, that, we're already dealt, our hands were already dealt. You know, we were holding the cards that we're holding, uh, and, and we got to do our best to, to play with them and, and, uh, you know, but I have no idea why, why they were, they were dealt this way.
I have one other concern I'd like to just talk about with my board members and get some opinions. I'm a little concerned about the barn. I'm a little concerned that no one knows whether that barn is going to stay or that barn's going to get knocked down. I feel that, shouldn't we know that before we grant this? I mean, that's, is it an, is it an old barn? What, when was it built?
It is old. I don't know exactly when it was built, um.
Did you have to go before the historic?
That I don't know because we're not involved directly with the, with the building permit procedure. So that's between the owner, the architect and the building inspector.
Is the owner here online so we can ask them? Is the owner present?
Don't see anybody else other than us. I take that back.
Mar- Margaret, I, so if I can throw two more cents into this ring here. I understand what you're saying and I, I agree with it. And any motion for approval of the site plan for me should require two conditions. At least two conditions, one of them being that the understanding that it's an existing barn to remain and not a tear down. That the site plan approval should be contingent on that. And one of my own, um, concerns is that, um, the site plan should be, site plan approval should also be conditioned that the barn will not increase in size due to any subsequent building department approvals. That, um, again, just for different concerns through my lens, um, if this barn in any way is required to increase in footprint, this board should have an opportunity to re-review this plan.
Yeah, and I, I a hundred percent agree with what you just said, and I'll just say for, kind of furthering that point, if they did increase it, they'd be going above their, um, their allowed impervious area.
Right.
So they'd kind of be, they'd kind of be stuck with that anyway. But I have no problem with you saying that as a condition.
I, I know our jurisdiction is site plan review, but in my own review of the floor plans. I just want to make it known that any increase or modification to the plans as presented should come before this board again.
Yeah, understood.
So Julio, so i- if indeed they have to knock it down. Because that's not what we're being told now. That we're getting a possibility of knocking it down. But if they have to knock it down and start again. I'm concerned on what it's going to look like. And I think that, you know, uh, we should, they should come before us again if they decide to knock the building down.
I agree, I, a thousand percent agree, and it's why it's one of the two conditions I would propose.
Right.
Wouldn't they be held to the architectural? Or, uh, uh, page that we were looking at just before?
I don't know. This is the whole thing. I mean, if that's, that's the submission, uh, I'm not sure that that's, you know, that's what the existing barn is going to look, is going to look like. If they have to knock it down, they might not want to make some improvements and, and upgrade the exterior to look a little bit different. So, you know, I, I'm fine with the way it is, but if they knock the building down. Yeah, I, I think they should come back before the planning board, not, not to be difficult. It's just that, you know, we want to make sure that things are properly done.
Just from a compliance standpoint, I agree with you, Mark.
Tom, I have a question. If the ownership knew that the planning board would entertain more a new barn that was architecturally fitting. Not necessarily look much different, but structurally sound for the sake of the town in the next hundred years. Do you think that's something that they would entertain? Or are you of the mindset that they're looking to do everything possible to maintain at least one of these walls? For the purpose of benefiting from the word existing. Rather than new construction and longevity. But others, where, where are they hanging their hat on this? On the bylaws and the word existing, trying to get it done? Or do they ultimately have a preference to build a new barn, but they're worried about difficulty through us or the rest of the town?
So. Uh, let me look real quick at the, the layout.
But I think the footprint, uh, and Julio, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the footprint, they can actually knock it down and build on that footprint.
Theoretically, yes. So again, I'm going to add three, three cents here. This, the barn is not, is, um, it's not immune or, or, um, excluded from any building code requirements. It, it, as an existing structure, it has to comply with the building code for an existing structure. It still has to be permitted, it still has to comply with all the, the codes. Um, it's a different application if it's a brand-new build compared to the existing. However, just because it's an existing barn does not preclude it from meeting the standards of care of the building code. It's just a different section of the code. That part to me is, is, again, just from my background, is less concerned. No matter what they do, they're going to have to have a structurally sound building, a structurally sound structure itself, just no matter which chapter of the code that they comply with.
Yeah, that is, I know that is a primary concern of theirs too, um, because they've kind of gone back and forth a little bit with the architect, talking about different options, um, for shoring it up and making sure that it is structurally sound.
Anybody else?
I think you know where I stand.
Yeah. So. The reason I asked the question, Tom, was we are here, um, we're here tonight, uh, you know, about to make a decision or, or ask for a motion and to support or not. And if on your side, you knew the goal was to put up a new structure. Regardless that they would both conform, perhaps it would be great to see plans of what's being proposed. And include that in our decision-making process. That's the only reason I asked. I'm not suggesting one way or the other. More so trying to help the board in a transparent way of where this project is really going. Because deep in my heart, I feel that somebody knows where the project's going as it relates to those four walls and that roof. One of them or none of them, but nonetheless. Would anybody like to make a motion one way or the other?
So before, I, I could make a motion, um, but I also want to take the temperature of the board. Do we want to administratively approve a waiver that hasn't yet been requested for the removal of the trees? Or are we better off continuing? Until we get both waivers formally applied for and then act?
I'll jump in on that. I, I would hate to use the words grant and waiver in the same sentence when the waiver wasn't proposed before us. I'd rather wait. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'm very strong.
Idea of how we feel about it, but officially, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I'm very strong. We feel that we should wait till the next meeting until we have, you know, a little more information. And perhaps we could have one of the owners here and we could ask the owner, because Tom's an engineer and of course he doesn't know. He, he knows his job, but maybe an owner could come if there's, uh, if they have decided what they're going to do with the barn. And that is why I mentioned the waiver. Since a waiver hasn't been requested for the trees. I, I don't think we can grant one until a waiver is formally requested for the trees. And I agree with the trees. I think that the trees should be, not as many trees there.
But don't we have the right to say we don't want them there as planning board to protect the infrastructure of the, um, drainage?
I, I don't know that, Laurie. Uh, I, I don't know, but I mean, you know.
Well, I mean, i- if it came down to it, we, we, we have the, the right to say, well, I'm, I'm not going to vote to approve it unless the trees are out. I mean, if it's that, that vital.
Right.
You know, I would, I would vote no on it, if the trees were there.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I just comment on it real quick? Um, to me, I think the, the, the cleanest way to handle it is to have that waiver added to the plans and the trees taken off the plan. I think that would be the cleanest and, and best way to handle it. Um, I don't know if there were any, I don't know if Tom knows this, if there were any conditions in the ZBA approval, um, that the barn had to remain, or if not, then there had to be an amendment to the zoning decision. So that might, that, that might clear some of the, some of the concerns if that was the case. Tom, do you know if, if that was discussed at all as part of the, the ZBA approval?
So.
We have the decision, don't we?
Yeah.
It didn't specifically call it out, so that's why I don't know if there was any discussion on it.
Yeah, that's what I was, I didn't remember if it specifically called it out in the decision, but I do, I don't remember it coming up in the meetings that they specifically wanted us to, keep it as existing, like you say, however that definition is met. I think the, the whole idea of keeping the barn and rehabbing it has kind of just been taken from the start with what the intention of the owner was. And whether or not they're open to tearing down or rebuilding, if that's the better option for them in the town, um, I'm not sure. I think it's just kind of the idea that they had that they would be rehabbing the existing building, not building something new.
Well, I also don't know that it's our, it's our place to tell them what to do, to rebuild or, or, or re-rehab. I think we should just have that clarity of what the intention is. If it's, if it's going to be an existing structure that they're just going to rehab, that's what this board should act on.
Yeah, that's definitely the intention.
If they're going to be submitting a revised plan with a waiver, um, I don't know how the board would feel about just adding a note, just to clearly outline that. Say, the intent of this project is to, is to, um, redevelop the existing barn. If a new structure is to be constructed, then a, then a revised certificate of action will be required, something along that language, if that would.
Well, I'll also just, I'll also just call the board's attention to the, in the packet, there is a narrative for site plan review application. And it clearly states the existing barn will be rehabbed inside and out to create office space on the first floor and a yoga studio on the second floor. So I think the clarity might just be define what the rehab is.
Well, and, and at that point, does that matter to us if it's meeting all, all codes?
Maybe not, yeah, maybe not.
No, I, if, if they're going to rehab it, then that's one thing and that's fine. And if they knock it down because they can't, and you know, once you start into an old building, sometimes you run into problems that you can't repair. So I think, uh, if they're going to rehab it, that's one thing, and then if they decide when they're into the project that they've got to put a new one up, then maybe they need to come back and see us.
So in respect of the effort made to date by all of them and what we've shared tonight. Do we want to as a board consider voting on what is? do we want to as a board consider voting on what is proposed to us, including the language and the narrative that Helio shared? And note that if there were to be any change, that they would have to come back before us, um, if, if their effort in terms of restoring the existing structure. You know, my concern with the, my question to you right now and my concern with the phrase existing structure is some of the things we know about when it comes down to using one wall is still considered the existing structure. But in their defense, if the, if the net-net or the result is what they're architecturally sharing with us tonight further down, then does it really matter? In other words, where, where are we doing our due diligence? Where are we following what's proposed, including what Helio just shared? In compared to complicating things. That's, that's where I'm torn tonight. If everything goes according to what's said, do we have the right and are we doing our job in voting on it as presented? But at the same time, will we be protected if their scope of work expands? And will we be made known? And will it be caught? And will it change the plan?
Like I said, I think if, if we're gonna ask for the waivers to be on the plan, I, I think that's, that's the best way to proceed with that. Um, if the building changes significantly, I think, um, I don't have a copy of, of the certificate of action in front of me. Um, Rossi, Ross is here, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
One, one of the conditions in a, in a normal certificate of action is, is some kind of statement that says any significant change will require an amendment to the certificate of action, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, they'd have to come back either way.
So, so that is written into the certificate of action. I would consider having to tear down one of the primary existing structures, having to replace it. I would, I would consider that a significant alteration that would require them to come back for an amendment to the certificate of action.
But the only, we're gonna know that is if the building department sends them back up, correct?
Correct.
And I'd be okay with that. Personally, I'd, I'd be okay with that. Then everybody within their own jurisdiction is handling it appropriately. If we put those conditions on any approval, I'm comfortable with that.
I am too.
But, uh, you know, to, to, to Nick's point and to Dan's point, I don't know that we can make an, uh, that type of motion if we don't have that formal waiver request. And I almost feel reading between, in, you know, the, the tea leaves here, we may be better off continuing to the next meeting where the formal waiver requests will be, uh, presented. Or the additional waiver request will be presented. And hopefully by that time, Tom, you can add those couple of other comments that we've made. We can make a condition of any motion that, you know, should the building change or, or increase in footprint, they would be subject to re-review. And, uh, that might be the easiest path.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely.
Sorry, go ahead, Tom. Sorry.
Okay, I was just gonna say we can definitely, we can add the waiver request. Um, and then we can remove. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page with what trees to remove from the plan. So I would say certainly these two, cuz they're right up against it. Um, how are we feeling about the two here? I'm, I'm, it seems like probably at least these three. What do we think about the one on the corner?
I'm good with the one on the corner as well. I mean, I just don't understand why would he include that when we're mitigating risk by not putting the other three. So I, I'm good for four.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I, I agree, Nick.
Yeah.
I'm fine. Me too.
Dan, uh, I got a follow-up question, uh, yeah, once everybody's answered their, I, I haven't heard Laurie's answer on, or, or thoughts.
Yes, she's good with it.
Okay, Dan, uh, i- is, is gravel considered pervious or impervious?
For the drainage report, as far as doing is pre and post, this gravel is considered impervious.
Yeah, we, we modeled it the same as pavement, um, just to be conservative, although gravel and pavement are very, very similar in runoff. And then the gravel is taken into account with the lot coverage that wasn't excluded.
And i- it, just in terms of the gravel, do we have any, any, any say in, in what kind, what size or?
It is, it is. They, they did add, um, a specification on the, on the plans that that was requested. Um, so it's very clear what the new surface construction materials would be.
Yeah, so it's using, it's an alteration of the town's detail for the pavement cross-section. Um, we're using the same base and the same dense grade on top. Um, but instead of four inches of dense grade, we're adding the thickness of the pavement as well. So the, the entire thickness of the profile is the same. And the materials outside of the pavement are the same.
All right. So, Tom, I think you got a really good pulse on how we feel, um, not only about the trees, um, in a proposed waiver at a subsequent meeting, but also about the waivers and what the plan should reflect, correct?
Yep.
All right. So we will, um, unless anybody wants to add more, I believe we're in a position to entertain a motion to continue.
So move to continue.
Do we have a date set certain?
That's going to be the twenty-sixth, or that's the holiday, right?
That's the holiday.
June ninth, June ninth is the next scheduled planning board meeting.
So I have a motion on the floor by Margaret Sweet and second by Helio Rosa. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Nick Psycho-Patas, yes. Tom, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Item number two, release of lots from a performance covenant, Clarin Estates, one-one-eight Clarin Street. Dan or Ross, can you give us a hand?
Sure. Um, this was a kind of a unique situation. This, this lot, um, one eighteen Clarin Street, also known as map one sixty, lot one twenty-two dash four, um. There was some back and forth on lots that were in the performance covenant, came out of the performance covenant, um, back in December of twenty thirteen, the planning board voted to allow lot three of the subdivision to be released in exchange for lot one to be placed back into the performance covenant that was previously released. Um, lot one was the last remaining held lot as part of that performance covenant. Somehow, things were missed and a permit was issued for that lot one. There is currently a house there. There is residents of the house. Um, so this is an encumbrance on his, on his title that he is part of the in the, his lot is still in that performance covenant. Um, there's no charity left for this subdivision. Um, all the construction was reviewed and, and signed off on by the Department of Public Works. Um, so at this time, I would recommend to the board that we would, um, we is, release this lot from the performance covenant and that would take it to end all lots out of that performance covenant.
Thank you, Dan. Folks, this one's pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, I, I think it's, I agree with you. It's as straightforward as long as everything, all of the builders' responsibilities are completed and the development is complete, the roads are built, any utilities that are included are, are, are delivered. And, uh, well, all of the builders', uh, covenants have been satisfied.
Yes, I talked to the Department of Public Works today to confirm all that had been addressed.
Okay, straightforward then.
I just think it's amazing that they did title searches and they bought title insurance and nobody caught this.
I know, agree.
I'm really shocked.
Happens more often than.
I'm not.
You are not, huh?
I, 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 I hear about the, these, you know, wacky title situations all the time and I'm not even in the business.
Well, I, I'm, I'm in the business, but I, I normally, but somebody catches usually title companies, not title search, title companies.
Yeah.
They're the ones who usually catch this, okay? So I was kinda shocked, but I agree. I mean, the poor man has to have belief.
So, can we entertain a motion?
Motion to release, uh, the property from any, uh, lien or contingencies.
Second?
Second.
A second.
Or, okay, so we have a motion to release one-one-eight Clarin Street from its performance covenant made by Kevin Estes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lori Anne?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Psycho-Patas, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, who, who seconded?
Lori Anne.
Thank you.
Yes. Gets us to number three, uh, comment period, forty B residences of Hawthorne.
So, um, Ross and I met with the, the new, uh, special town council, um, for, for all forty Bs here in town. Um, just kinda went over what this process, um, entails. Um, we had done some research to see what the planning board had done in the past for these. Normally, um, it's not something that the board has responded to for forty Bs, um, cuz it won't come before the planning board. It'll be through a concert, comprehensive permit process through the ZBA. Um, but this is just an initial assessment, um, by Mass Housing. Um, kinda gives the developer things that they should prepare for, um, for comments. So the town council recommended that, um, anything we're gonna add as a comment, basically, we're, if, if the board decides that they want to, um, have a letter sent, the letter will be given to, um, the combination of the town and, um, administrator and town council that they will include in their package. Um, so comments that we would be looking for from the planning board, um, would be tied to whatever zoning regs. It would be questions that the board would ask of a project that would be done by right. So, you know, conditions that you would have questions on in regards to a conventional subdivision can, you know, site plan submitted. Um, those would be the concerns we'd address. So, um, I guess we're just kinda asking the board if there are, um, these items of concern that we would like to to send, or you would like to send as a board, um, for us to add to that common package, package to give to Mass Housing. Um, for their initial assessment to give a site eligibility letter for the developer to continue forward with the forty B process.
Uh, I have a que- Dan, who is special counsel on this?
Her name is Susan Murphy.
Susan Murphy, okay.
Yes.
And you have, don't, you have like all my comments. The other board members must have sent you comments too. Do you have a list of them?
I just, I just have, just, just a listed form. Like I said, we should try to, um, tie them just specifically to, to zoning regulations, comments for that. Um, that's all the Mass Housing is gonna be looking at in this stage of the application. Um, so concerns, like we have concerns of lots, of lot sizes in frontage, if this is gonna be an issue, um. One of the ones that I thought was valid, for example, like the school bus stop, there should be something on the site plans that provide off that streaks. That's a tough corner. Um, off, off the street parking for something like that. So that would be the comments that we'd be looking to, to submit as part of our, our letter. Um, so I, like, again, it's just up to the, to the board. We're, we're gonna be sending a letter from the board. I just wanna make sure.
So it has, it has to relate to, to existing zoning?
It does, it, it technically, it doesn't have to, but those are the ones they're gonna consider when they submit the package to Mass Housing. So they're gonna go through our comments and they're gonna determine what is applicable and, and what is a concern to address to, to Mass Housing. So like the DPW is gonna address concerns with sewer capacity and water, I'm assuming, um, that's, that's their purview. That's something they did for a similar, another forty B project. Um, so basically, things that we would be concerned about, if, like I said, if a subdivision came in, if, um, if a AP site plan came in, questions you would have to go for that. Um, financials, pricing, that's nothing that, that they're gonna take our comments on.
I, I'm really concerned about the buses, as you know, and I, I, I did send you something about that and.
Yeah, like, yeah, I definitely think that's a, that's something we should.
And also in that note, Dan, I did put that we should get this, um, Dartmouth schools to look at that site, at that too, because, you know, you've got a lot of houses in there and you're gonna have a lot of children. And that bus has to come off Tucker Road, has to off Tucker Road.
I would agree with that. So I think that ba- basically, it's like, um, we'd give like a, a statement and then a, you know, a sentence or two describing what our concern is. So I think that would be something that's a, a valid concern that they could then incorporate into their design package. From what, from the plans, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at the plans, they're very basic conceptual plans. And that's what gets sent to, to Mass Housing. Mass Housing is basically looking at it to determine, does Dartmouth have a need for, for housing? And I can pretty much guarantee you they're gonna say yes, because we do have a need for housing. Questions are what, what can we do to get on the radar for concerns that we have that will be addressed. After this process, it's gonna go to zoning board of appeals. So they're gonna probably hire a consultant to do this review. Um, so we're not gonna, this isn't gonna become before the board as part of the review process.
But, but Dan, what's, what, what's the situation now? And I know that, uh, Mass Housing, cuz I've dealt with them several times when I was on ZBA and I'm dealing with them now in, in Rhode Island, uh, Rhode Island housing. But what's the problem if, I don't know if my other board members sent things, and I know I sent in quite a few suggestions. Even though maybe Mass Housing won't look at all the suggestions, I, I don't see why we just can't send in our suggestions.
Well, like I said, I met with, I spoke with the town administrator and with the attorney, and this is what they recommended should we, they should be getting from the boards. And that's what they're gonna submit to their package. So if you wanna, if you, if, if you decide you wanna do X, Y, and Z, we can include those, but they might not be looked at with validity. I think we want it, if we wanna to, to be addressed of the concerns, I think we need to make sure we have, we're showing valid concerns that have significance to the town in regards to our regulations.
All right, Dan.
And what would be expected under a normal.
Okay, but do, do you have a list of the valid suggestions this board made?
You, you're the only one that sent us comments.
Uh, it, it was my impression that we were gonna discuss them at this meeting and, and amalgamate the, uh,
Yes.
The list. And so I, I did not send them in, but I.
If you, if you have them, we can definitely.
I, I, I have them.
That was, that was the thing. Like I said, um, going through the list with, with town council, out of the list that came through, things that seem like they, they could be addressed, uh, lot coverage, size and lots, again, school bus stop. Uh, one of the other, other comments in regards to open space area for, for playgrounds or something like that. Those were, those were the ones that, that they probably just don't to include. So I would say those four are the, were the big ones.
All right. Well, I'd like to add to that, that the whole parcel that's under contention here uh, abuts zone two and very close to zone one, which is where the pumps are actually located, uh, of the Aquifer Overlay Protection District. Uh, so thi- this is a, a, wha- what's done to this parcel is incredibly vital. There are, uh, one, two, three, four, five pumps that are directly west of this property, uh, which we, and those, those, uh, circumference around those pumps is considered zone one. And then the whole area that abuts on the west side of, of the, what's, what we call Hawthorne Country Club, uh, is, is a zone two aquifer overlay protection district. Uh, and there's, if you take a look at the, the property grading, uh, the, the west side of that grading is steep.
Very steep.
Uh, so whatever happens up at the top is gonna happen down at the bottom. And if we start adding a ton of impervious surface, uh, and, and yet, do you need streets in the development? Absolutely. But you you need to have a a real real plan about how to handle the the runoff.
Yeah, and that'll go into one of the items that we that in my opinion, should be of concern is the lock coverage. And as far as the Aqua for Zone goes, looking at letters that were sent for for recently submitted forty B, the DPW did comment on the Aqua for Concerns, so I think that's something that we can point out as well. And will probably be reiterated by other comment letters. So that is definitely, I think, something valid that we can add.
If this is a forty B development project, another topic is there there is, there are no facilities close to this area for any kind of even basic survival shopping. And what I mean by survival shopping, just basic food, food and clothes. That and as far as I I know, it's not even on a cert route.
I don't think those can be, those won't be considered for as far as the site eligibility letter. Again, if we were doing a conventional subdivision here, that wouldn't be a concern. I can I can address that with with the town council to see if they feel like that's something that we could address or would be a valid point to to consider. But that wasn't the impression they gave, but I can I'll be more than happy to 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 reach out to her again.
Yep, I I would appreciate it if you if you would voice that concern. And double down on the the planning board's support in the the comments that were made by the building department regarding the the aquifer and the and the the wells.
Um, Dan, when you send, before you send this, our ideas out, could you send the board a copy of that so we could look at that before you send it out?
Yeah, we could, we could hopefully have it written by tomorrow unless anything crazy happens during the day. And then that could be, I could send that out to the board and and you could address. Just make sure when you send back, you don't respond also, we don't have any meeting issues. But yeah, I believe it's next Monday is when is when
The deadline?
My office needs it.
I think it's even Friday, the sixteen.
Friday, sorry. Yeah, Friday the sixteenth. So if we get if we get that tomorrow, I think that will give it time for you for the board to get it in.
Dan, I have an issue that no one thinks about.
Okay.
And it's something that has to be thought of in every single subdivision that we do from now on. The post office will no no longer deliver house to house to house, right? What they want in a subdivision like this is they want some place for them to put their big boxes.
Right. I'm assuming that'll be in that first little, that first little turn off their show, and I'm assuming that'll have have that. But we can come up with it. We can, as as part of the bus stop, we can have bus stop slash mail.
Yeah.
Mail pickup.
Because that's going to create a, if everyone decides to get their mail at five o'clock.
Yeah, it's going to have to be so. And and it looks like the way they set it up, you're going to get into the facility, not just pull in and stop. So you pull after pull in a little bit to to not having that backup. You don't want to have somebody stopping right at, right when you pull onto the first road. And then have to come in.
And I can tell you.
One of the other issues that, oh, sorry.
The post office will tell you where to put it if they don't like it where you put it.
Right. That I'm assuming that'll come through once the once the comprehensive permit submitted, that'll be part of that review process.
Um, you know, it's it's doesn't always happen that way because post office doesn't know about this. So someone's got to send information to the post office to to take a look at this and do it. Because the subdivision across the street from us is going in. That was a problem. They didn't, I I told them it was going to be a problem and they ended up having to put the boxes way at the end of the subdivision because you, there was no room.
Right.
And I think the other thing, I don't know who's looking at the traffic, but I'm going to tell you now, that traffic going in and out with just one, one lane, it looks like for each going in and out, it's going to be horrendous there.
Yeah, I know there was in the initial sidewalk that they were, there was talk that there had to be a a traffic study as part of the comprehensive permit application. So that is in the works to get a traffic study.
Um, I don't want to hop on school buses. But, you know, you've got a very large subdivision here. And in the winter times, it's snowing, you've got people that are going to go and pick their kids up at that where the buses drop the kids off. If you've got a small kindergarten child, you're going to go get that child and you're going to have a a problem with parking there. So you have to, you have to make sure that there's enough room so cars can park there to pick up their kids.
There might, there might be the need if if the if the project stays at the size it is now, there might be a need that there might need to be multiple bus stops.
Well, maybe, but the the thing is, and I'm amazed because I'm, as I told you, Dan, the other day when I talked to you about this, I'm I'm involved in one as a broker in Rhode Island and the planning board. Boy, they put down restrictions like you can't believe, okay? So I'm, you know, I think that some of these things have to be adhered to, even if we have to send a letter to the ZBA after when this comes, especially for kids and school buses. I mean, I'm adamant about that.
I want to add to the school bus. Margaret, your sentiment is exactly what I was thinking. I'm I'm not convinced that a bus stop is the right idea when you might have thirty six vehicles going to that bus compared to the bus just going to the thirty six homes or the top of each street. There's got to be something algorithmically, mathematically, that's much more functional than an entire forty B going to the bus stop twice a day, because you know, in New England, the majority of the time, they're going to go by vehicle. Cold, rain, whatever it may be. So.
I like, I can tell you right now, the the way the buses work, elementary, they drop off to each house. It's only, it's only the middle and high school where they have top of street stops.
I have to drive my kids to the bus stop, my grandkids to the bus stop, and it's not at the house.
For elementary?
Elementary.
Really?
To drive them to the bus stop.
That's surprising. That's surprising.
So the problem, and and if, like Laurie said, she's driving her grandchildren. So I I really think, Dan, that that's really got to be a top priority in you know, in this subdivision, because, you know, we had many years ago, a child get killed. And I never want to see that again.
Nope.
I have a separate question. It's rare, but it's going to happen. Do forty Bs tend to have more problems than conventional neighborhoods as snow accumulates and DPW moves snow? Or not?
Just, I've never heard of any concern about it. I don't, I'm assuming these are private, so it's going to be private snow removal.
Okay.
I don't know if the one on Slocum Road, if that was expected by the town, but that has I could ask the DPW, see what the, if if they if they taken over any of these.
That actually raises a question. Do do these roads come to before, let's say the project goes through? Are the roads that access all of the the homes, are they automatically accepted by the town by virtue of being forty B? Or does this have to go through town meeting to have these roads accepted?
I believe the one Slocum Road, it was noted that I had to go through the normal procedure any other road that would be done. Again, I can get clarification to be sure, but I don't.
I was just curious.
I don't think there's any. I mean, a lot of times it ends up staying private road, so.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say.
If it doesn't get. Some forty Bs end up being a more apartment style, so they're.
Right, right, apartment style.
It's 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 more access ways than traditional roads. Like I said, the one I'm thinking of is the one on Slocum Road next to Burgo Basketball.
Right.
So I I can, I can definitely do some some research tomorrow into that one and see what what happened with that neighborhood.
And so we have to make sure that buses, plows, fire trucks can get in these, get into these roads.
Right. Which which Lori makes me want to ask the question, the most, the first road is A, you come in, you take a left on road B. Does road B dead end to a flat end? Or, you know, what happens there instead of a cul- cul-de-sac or turn?
Well, that's that's an area of question too, because I'm not sure that's going to stay in that configuration. Uh, hold on, let me get to the plans.
I don't think it can, Dan.
I don't think so either.
Oh, Dan, it can't.
That looks like it ties into a street here.
I, if, I, I, I guarantee that'll be one of the main concerns, because that's a private road, and I don't think they got, I don't think they have the right to tie into that. I do, I mean, looking at it, if you see the lot, they they left a lot of land there compared to other lots, so I don't know if they set that up to be a cul-de-sac down there. Again, I don't want to make assumptions on on what their thought processes are.
Right.
But I I don't see that that happening where you can discharge. And then it becomes an issue with long dead ends, so that needs to be addressed too.
Um, Dan, do we have, I can't, we don't have a subdivision in the forty B, not apartments now. Individual houses, we don't have one this large in town, do we?
Not anywhere near this size. No, we had, we had a Slocum Farm, I think it was called.
Yeah, but that wasn't.
And then we had a I don't even, Grady Estates off of Pix, but but that one ended up changing because they ended up getting a special permit for reduction in lot sizes in industrial districts, so that didn't stay a forty uh, prototypical forty B they asked.
I don't think we've ever had a forty B for individual houses like this.
You have Lincoln Park.
That wasn't a forty.
That's a forty, that's a forty.
Yeah, but it's not a forty B. Yeah, but that wasn't a forty B. That was, that was, and I, I Yeah, and I, 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 I used, I told Donald Perry about what I thought about some of those lots. Some of them are tiny, six thousand square foot lots, okay? But I don't ever recall anything this large as a forty B.
No.
Now, this is significant.
Yeah, I'm going to, a lot of my.
Go ahead.
Just to add again, a little flavor for myself. My biggest intimidation when I saw these plans is the runoff, and I think Kevin spoke to a lot of that already. Given the grading in the drop off of the site, and I know there's going to be some talented engineers that are going to be working on this, but it looking at it, it was very intimidating to see how this is going to work from east to west.
Again, there's no technical information submitted with this, so we don't have any drainage calculations. We don't know if this, if those ponds that they're showing could even come close to to handling that. So we're not at that point yet.
Yeah, agreed. And it it's just my reaction to this. And, you know, obviously, it's a DPW thing, but capacity, we've had, already had so much discussion in town about capacity for sewer and again, this just looks so intimidating for what the town can support. And I know, again, it'll be part of the processes that have been followed, but this is, this is going to be something.
To clarify one more thing, this is as a matter of right, correct?
Well, they're going to petition for a site eligibility letter in a mass housing, but
Correct.
The state has, the gov- the governor's put out a an agenda that she wants, I forget what the number was, two hundred and twenty thousand new housing units in the next ten years. So they're going to say, yes, the town needs housing.
Of course. Lori, you were about to say something just prior to Helio.
No, we we got it. It's fine. Yep.
All right, so are we comfortable with the comments made thus far? Is there anything else we want to share for Dan to record and or include? And Dan, tomorrow or in the next day or two, you're going to try and share with all of us what you have?
Correct.
Are we also going to get a final list of of the statement by by the town sent to the state?
As a planning board?
Yes.
Yes.
I I can, I can ask that. That wasn't, that wasn't, we didn't get anything for the last one, but I don't know if we can get a copy.
No, no, are are we going to get a copy of what we send?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I I would like to get a copy of what we.
The planning, the planning board.
No, the the final letter.
Yes, that's what I said. I will, I will find that out. I don't know.
Yeah, the final letter is sent from the town of Dartmouth.
Oh, from the town of Dartmouth or the planning board?
He's, he's talking about the the letter that's sent.
The final, the final, final letter that's sent to the state.
Mass housing.
Here's our concerns.
Right. And I think we should get a copy. We have a planning board.
Absolutely. All right. Do we want to move on from that item? Anybody else? If not, we can go to ongoing discussion item number four, our two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six priority list. And before we get started, I just want to share what a board member shared with me, and I think is a great idea that a lot of people will say, you're on the planning board, what do you do? Or perhaps they have no idea, or perhaps time passes and they're not aware. But there are people that need to know, especially at town meeting and other boards and individuals that contribute to the function of the town. So one of our board members suggested that our priority list and what we can put together in terms of our focus be recorded by Dan and potentially read into town meeting. How does the board feel about that? And Dan, is that possible?
Well, I think that's a good idea. And we also can insert some kind of letter or something into the package for our town meeting. Okay, so the town meeting members will have it in yellow or blue or green.
I think we already missed the deadline for that.
Did we?
I think so. I thought I I'm pretty sure, but I could check.
We can, we can still print it and have it handed out when they.
Yeah, you could, you could have, you could have somebody at the, in the hallway.
Yeah, we could ha- we could hand it out. Okay.
Okay, so Dan, we'll plan on that between now and then, as as we, today, last meeting, next meeting is going to be June ninth. Okay, so yeah. Let let's just discuss a little bit what we want to include in that. And Dan, if you don't mind helping record and put together, we 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 spent a fair amount of time. We talked about fifty five plus, but needs to be affordable. We talked about protecting the Aqua Four. We talked about sixty two and senior housing opportunities. We kind of focused on fifty five plus being the larger issue and affordable. That's kind of what I have down as a a conclusion and the health of our water supply and then the architectural guidelines. What is it that we want, Dan? Perhaps three bullets or five bullets? What is it that we want to share? And in what way do we want to share it? Do we want it to say, dear town meeting members on behalf of the current planning board? Or do we want it to be just very factual? Two thousand and twenty five planning board priorities or or focus group? How does the board feel about how the ideas are presented on paper? Are we telling a story or are they line items?
I think line items would be good because they have enough to read. So that's my feeling. And some of them don't read anything. They go in there and read them.
Did you see, did you see the priority list that that Ross included in there? So something like that?
Yes.
Just expand on if needed.
Yes, I like that, Dan.
Yeah, I like the bullets, but like I, just expand on it like you said.
Yeah, and I I would almost, Dan, the 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 insert was was ideal. Just to grab people's attention, I almost treat it like a a single page PowerPoint presentation.
Right.
Big, big letters, bullet points, short, sweet to the point. If we if we write a lot of letters and digits, people are going to ignore it, they're not going to read it.
Right.
So looking at the one they shared in the packet, fifty five plus housing bylaw, senior and assisted living, number two, affordable housing, three, potential high density overlay district, four, architectural guidelines, five, master plan implementation strategies, and six, water supply preservation.
Under three, under three, do you want to say that's Route Six corridor so that they don't think all of a sudden in
Right.
pain there, they're going to get high density?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if we want to limit.
Number three might get taken care of for us.
Yeah, I know. I don't know that I wanted, I don't know that I want to say Route Six or 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 reference where. Yeah, I know, I don't know that I wanted, I don't know that I wanna say route six or 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 reference where um. Because I think it would be unfair to pigeonhole us too. And work with our back against the wall if a if a viable project came about somewhere other than that. I just think that at this point. We need to discuss increased density as an overlay and and how we define it. Um, may not be as limited to route six, because what about parts of Farnes Corner Road?
Right, right.
And nothing personal, but nobody wanted Kentucky Fried Chicken on those lots. And if that small building is not part of the historic society, and you can go up with three offices on the first floor and twelve units on the top. You know, that might not be, that might not be a bad increased density, low traffic for that, for that corner, so. And I know that's route six, but it's Tucker as well. I wanna avoid limiting ourselves when we're trying to pitch something. Because quite frankly, I think anybody that doesn't like the idea, they're gonna try and put our backs up against the wall regardless. So I I wanna be able to fight, not say, oh, they were right, it's a different road or it's a different area. Especially since it's just a conceptual, um, it's a thought right now.
And that was one thing that stopped. That potentially happening in twenty seventeen was that certain area of town felt that they were very pigeonholed into, you're dumping this. High density zoning only in our one area, we have to take the burden in one small section of town, and it. It got shut down rather easily, so I think we wanna take a little broader look at things and. Not just say, we're just sticking it right here, and you guys have to have to bear the brunt of of the higher density housing. We have a housing production plan meeting coming up in June too, so I think we'll get a lot of feedback. Um, hopefully from Serpent and from the members of the of the committee. Um, that we can, that we can add to our our planning strategies as well.
I I wasn't part of the board, but I'm just curious, prior overlays or something as recent as the marijuana overlay? How long did that take from concept to implementation?
I wasn't on the board, Laurie was.
The marijuana one wasn't, it it really wasn't that bad. I mean, we wrote it up, took a town meeting, and it passed. Um, but it took us a while to write it up, because. When you write something, you have to go back and just double check, is that what we really meant? So we had to, you know, edit and edit, and we took things from other communities. So I would say that took us about two months, maybe three. Um, to get it to town meeting, and then town meeting just fooled it. But I can tell you what we got slaughtered on was mixed use on route six.
And what was, what was the adverse argument?
The adverse argument was they were taking sections of route six and trying to make it specifically residential. Instead of making it mixed use. And. Planning board got slaughtered. So I think if we go with, if we go with, I'm not sure I wanna even say potential high density. I would say I, we gotta find something more. Less intense, just how how to say it, um, potentially. High density overlay district.
Well, I I think the word high is a bad word, because it turns people off. I'm not being funny, but but it means drastic in this regard, increased density. And then the definition of increased density is for someone that wants to sit down and listen to our argument.
Right.
But I don't think increased.
Affordable housing district.
Well, that would be number two.
Yeah, that's true, we talk.
Okay, how about a number three?
Yeah, they kinda.
A potential increased density for um for mixed.
Number three leads to number two.
Yeah, I I I'm I'm comfortable with number three being. Proposed increased density overlay district or increased density overlay district, and then, you know, to be discussed and to be determined, but. I'm not with with, with all due respect. I'm not really looking to kiss anybody or hug them or ask them for a pat on the back on this subject. Um, I'm really looking to collaborate and think twenty and thirty years ahead as to what the demands will be. Not from a idea perspective then, but what needs to be in service. We're we're gonna need these units in service, we're gonna need students and grandparents living in these units in twenty years. Raising families in these units in twenty years, so. I'm not necessarily looking to walk on eggshells, I am more of the mindset looking to fight and support. What I believe in, and if I have fellow board members that believe in it as well. We go to that, we're going to the bat for the, we're going to bat for the future on this one, it's not today. It's today's problem, but it's not gonna be tomorrow's resolution, it's down the road.
So do you wanna combine two with three?
I I, I think they're separate and distinct, and I'm just gonna tell you why.
One, one smaller, one's bigger, I mean.
Well, and and in an increased density overlay district.
Yep.
Fifteen years from now, you might have a building that's just got a few more amenities, like a gym and a common area or something like that, or a Starbucks on the first floor. And rents might be six hundred dollars more per month than the affordable housing units, and all of a sudden, someone's gonna tell us. You know, God willing, we're all still around, oh, it doesn't, it doesn't conform. You know, you guys wrote it up, but that, your your proposed project doesn't conform, I think they're very separate. Um.
So on number three, do you wanna put that, um, however you worded it?
Well, I wanna get rid of the word high.
Right, increase.
And I, I wanna get rid of the word, I wanna get rid of the word potential, because that implies I have doubt. I I, me personally, increased density overlay district, we're nowhere near into that subject. To really define the title and or answer questions, I don't think. We we just started talking about it last week.
Like I said, there's other organizations committees going along right now, where I think we're gonna get some more information over the next coming months. To help us make decisions in that, heading down that path.
So, that's.
So take, so take out potential.
Take out potential and take out high, just to increase density overlay district, there's so much yet to be determined, I don't think we could be more. I don't think we could be more specific, because we don't have anything, anything to share, and at the same time. I definitely don't wanna make reference to something that someone could leverage against me. Mixed use, route six, not in South Dartmouth, only in North Dartmouth, I'm being facetious. I don't wanna give them anything they can use against us, it's just a concept at this time.
Well, Nick, you said you could put to be determined. In that, when we talk about that, to be determined.
Yeah, increase, uh, increased density overlay district, um, to be determined.
Right, to be determined, okay?
Yeah, it's fair, it's very fair. So increased density overlay dis- district to be determined, and then we gotta carve out some time perhaps um on. Maybe on a agenda light meeting, specifically to take some of these. Items, but only discuss one, so we got forty seven or fifty two or fifty five or an hour, whatever it is. On the subject versus just blazing them over. Um, as far as number four goes. I'm I'm perplexed, what? What are we doing and or as of, if it's, if it's just a guideline? Why are we troubled by it and or what is our goal? Is if if our, if our goal is to just clarify where we stand. And or seek clarity between us and another board. Conceptually. Is it a priority list? I mean, are we, are we revamping the architectural guidelines? Are we looking to make a change to the bylaw, I mean, to the, to the guideline? Why would it be on a priority list? It's, and I'm not criticizing the fact that it's there. I'm just questioning our intent in sharing it on a priority list when it's just the guideline.
Uh, I think, I think for this one, sorry, go ahead, Kevin, go ahead. Uh, I think the biggest challenge with the architectural guidelines is clearing up misconceptions. About. How, if, and when they're being referred to and used. Uh, and and how it's not a planning board thing, it's actually. Uh, a a a building department thing, it it's, it's going through the building process. It it's, it it should be something that i- is touched by a number of groups. And everybody understands what they are, and and it 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 should not be a, a- as I feel right now at this point. It's a planning board thing. Um. The architectural guidelines are just guidelines, and they're out there to help guide certain regions. Of our town with particular character that that we want to make an effort to preserve. And that's its purpose, I don't think we're changing any of the purpose, I I, I think the main goal here. Uh, i- is to make sure everybody's on the same page, and Nick, you know, you you were, you were starting. To to uh, to to go down that path, and I applaud it, and I support it, and I'll do everything I can to help you with it. Um, I I just, just making sure that it's uh, i- it it's not. Bantered about and and by other, other people that are just uh, you know. Gripe, I guess, uh, uh, it it it's, it's not a, it's not a weapon, it it's a tool. Uh, to help preserve certain areas uh and maintain a consistent theme in. That area. Um. So, that's my two cents on it, uh, the, is it a planning board priority thing? Uh. I don't know, um. I I I I think that the 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 heaviest lift we have to 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 employ. Regarding item number four is just making sure all the different groups are on the same page. About what they are, what they're used for, and and uh, and and how they are a complete process. Uh, that that, you know, might early on begin with with the planning board, because we're approving the first plan. Uh, but also, you know, um, it it, e- every other department along the way should should be referring to them.
I don't, I absolutely do not disagree uh with anything you said. I I guess my real question is, and I appreciate all of your words. My real question is, if it's on here on the priority list, the way it sits here, architectural guidelines, it looks like the subject matter of ours. Do we, I mean, does it say um? Townwide architect, you know, uh, clarification of architect, do we imply that we're just bringing it up? To clarify our position and that we are only upholding the guideline as every other department in the process should? Like, how do we wanna spell it out on this priority list, or just leave it there the way it is? I agree with what you're saying, oh, sorry, Helio, go ahead.
I I'm just gonna add to 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 Kevin, Kevin put it very well, I almost feel like this number four. Should read architectural guidelines dash clarity on application. There's enough, there's been enough buzz on it recently. That I think there, we would do well by the town, and to anybody who wants to do. Business and come before us in the future to provide the clarity on application, cuz I think. Based on recent, there's the perception of ambiguity.
I agree. Clarification is needed, and again, it is guidelines.
I, I do not disagree.
Um, what do you think, Nick?
I I agree with everything that has been said so far. The weight on my chest is, and I I guess the burden is on the applicant. To do his or her due diligence and their professionals to understand that the guidelines. Should not be limiting in their interest or effort to do business with the town of Dartmouth. Ultimately, what I'm sharing is that. Because they're guidelines and they're not laws or bylaws, requirements. I wanna make sure that we offer the town. The opportunity to capture applicants, especially. In places where the guidelines have less of an impact to the town. And I I don't wanna reference route six seventeen times per meeting, but. I just wanna make sure. And 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 maybe I'm, maybe I'm worried about an applicant when I don't have to be, because the applicant and their and their team should look into it and realize. That it's just a guideline and take a stab at a plan or a project before us. That based on the architectural guideline may not be conforming, but then again, what's conforming, it's just a guideline. I I I'm gonna defer to the rest of you, to what's comfortable. This in itself. In my humble opinion, when we get to an increased density overlay district. That um includes the majority, but not necessarily all commercial zoning. That this architectural guideline should be. Not not excluded, because it's only a guideline, but. I ju- I just wanna be careful, I just wanna be careful, because what did happen in this town recently. Had nothing to do with that guideline, it's just perception is reality. But at the same time, I wanna make sure that the guideline doesn't involuntarily or voluntarily. Have an impact on such a project or proposed project from a developer um, or or anybody else, so. I'll make myself clear along the way, but I'm comfortable with whatever you folks as a board decide. Believe it the way it is or add clarity to it um for Helio.
Well, I already just, uh, we wanna be clear, at least from my point of view, be clear that these guidelines are not roadblocks.
Right.
To any, to anything that we're trying to do, and anybody who wants to come into Dartmouth should not look at the guidelines as a roadblock, as this big fence that you gotta. You know, leap and get through to do work, and that's where I think having that clarity on application is important. So that we can dispel any lingering perception, or that this is like. The big thing that you gotta overcome, because it's not, it never was. At least in my short time with 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 the board, it never was, and isn't, in my view.
Chick-fil-A came in, they made a couple of, someone made a suggestion, and they said, okay. And if they had said no, they still would have gone to Chick-fil-A, so I mean, you know, i- it's a guideline. Uh, yeah, we'd like to see it, we can't make you do it, okay, and that's pretty evident, and. When they come in and the first people that they meet, uh, talking about this would be our town planner and Ross. And I'm sure that Dan and Ross tell them these are guidelines, okay? So, you know, I think clarity would be all we need to add to that, that's my feeling.
What about, what about something along the lines of um? Architectural guidelines dash, when applicable, intended to preserve. The characteristics of, and I don't know if it's going to be um. I I guess, intended and preserve. Softens the blow a little bit, and and makes somebody in one line, re- reads one line and realizes that. Okay, I get what they're trying to do here, but at the same time, it's not mandatory.
Well, Mr. Taman, just the the first line, the actual architecture section of. Article twenty four, the site plan review is very small, and then it goes to referencing the architectural design guide. But the first line is architectural design shall be compatible with the character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood. That's the first sentence you read.
Right.
I think that encompasses a lot of what we've talked about. Right, and then it says the planning board. Shall encourage traditional New England architecture by maintaining an architectural design guide, so I don't know if that's how you wanna word it, maintain. Architectural guidelines, just so it's a living document as opposed to just a. Cuz cuz the the guideline isn't part of the actual zoning regulations, that's something the board can alter. At any given time that they feel that there's something in there that they don't feel is a, any longer appropriate.
We don't have to go to town meeting for that, we can just change it.
Correct.
So that can be changed, Nick, at any time we want.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm just processing the thought, I mean, I'm I'm good with that for now, and um. I don't, I don't wanna spend too much time on it, but at some point in time, I definitely want to agenda this. And just like the other priority list, uh, priority.
Yep, right.
Items, and and maybe define it a little further, so. Um.
Agreed.
All right, so. Helio, can you just one more time state what you wish that would be uh beyond the architectural guideline on the priority list?
I I would just add um. I I would just add um clarity on application.
Okay.
So architectural guidelines, application clarity.
I don't even, Helio, really quick, uh sorry, I didn't. I don't even know if that's necessary based on how it reads.
Uh the only reason I suggest it is architectural guidelines feels open-ended.
Right.
Just listing it as architectural guidelines feels open-ended. You know, we don't, I would would hate to have somebody interpret it. As, well, architectural guidelines are are they making it more rigid? You know, is that is that the direction the planning board is going? Are they making more binding? Versus, again, for clarity's sake, using that word a lot. Clarity on application is that we're just trying to provide a little bit more context on what the architectural guidelines are used for. I would hate to have somebody to hand out a piece of paper at town meeting and saying. Uh oh, what's the planning board up to? Are they gonna make it harder for everybody? No, we're actually not. We're definitely not.
So could it be architectural guidelines slash design clarifications?
Yeah, I I I I like that.
Yeah, that's good, Dan.
Yeah, no problem.
Are we all good with that? Lori and Kevin?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. All right, um moving on, master plan implementation strategies. I'm just trying to look back at my notes. We did, I know I spoke about it with. One member, but I don't recall if it was during the meeting. Did we bring up during the meeting that we wanted to? Reach out to the implementation team and ask if they could quarterly join us on one of our meetings? To share what they're working on? Does anybody recall if we had that in the meeting?
I s- I submitted, well, Ross and I submitted in the package. We kind of broke down a couple of sections, the land use and housing sections. And it kind of gives a little breakdown of of what wouldn't be in our purview. And kind of who the responsible parties are, so you can get a gauge. So so that was included in the packet. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at that. A lot of that kind of goes to. To to items we are discussing tonight as well as items in various. Um committees going forward that that will be addressing throughout the next um few months. So I don't know if if everybody just kind of wants to take a look at that and and kind of. Address comments.
Yeah, and I I didn't, I definitely didn't get that far in the packet, so forgive me, but. How does the board feel um about if it's not quarterly at least? Maybe twice during the calendar year that someone's on our agenda? To bring us up to speed as far as any activity, or is that not fair? Any activity as it relates to the master plan? Um, I'm just concerned personally, if somebody was to ask me a question tomorrow. I I couldn't answer a lot of questions about activity and master plan ever since we finished it up.
I I agree with you, Nick. Uh these these types of things have, um just in my own experience, um. Have a real chance of just being another piece of paper that's filed away somewhere as opposed to a living, breathing document. Um, a living, breathing plan. So even if it's twice a year, I think if nothing else, it puts um. Multiple folks um. In the in the forefront of this of this document, um. Otherwise, why bother doing it?
May I make a suggestion?
Course.
Okay, um, I agree, we should we should meet. Um, but perhaps the planning board should meet and to discuss this with the select board.
Agreed. Are you talking about specifically the master plan implementation?
Yes.
Sure.
I I think that maybe uh the the planning board and and the select board should meet, and I think they used to, right, Laurie?
Yes, we used to meet twice a year.
And I think we haven't done that. And uh Laurie, don't you think that's a good idea?
Yes, absolutely, um.
I think we need it.
Yes, we do need it because I don't, I I don't like the planning board getting blamed for things that really were not our fault. So I think.
Dan, we don't have a committee that implementing the master plan, do we?
No, that's why, like I said, in the parts I printed out, like you'll see there's some sections, planning board, town meeting. If we were, you know, redoing districts, doing overlay districts, that would be incorporation of those sections. Um, example, goal one, zone-specific areas in town for medium-density housing options. To expand access. So that would be some of the things we're discussing about our priority list. Some items have. Planning board slash town administrator, some have planning board slash selectmen. Those are items that we could discuss. We have a new town administrator that's gonna be starting in a few months. That might be something that might be more appropriate to wait. Until until we get that new town administrator. But those those are listed there. Some of the other things like we talked about, water quality, um what, there's a new water, I'm not sure the. The actual title is, but it's Water Quality Advisory Committee, something of that kind of language. So that addresses some of the issues. Um, the housing plan committee, that addresses some of the issues. So there are things that are going on. That that were highlighted in in that section in the packet. Um, but there are things that have multiple. Um, responsible parties to implement those strategies too as well.
Okay, then I'm gonna go back to our list of 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 priorities. Some of these things are on this master plan. Should we? Uh, um, next to them, put as as per master plan, so that people know that we're working on something that's out of the master plan?
So.
You know what I'm saying?
I I hear you and I just want to chime in while while Dan was saying what he was saying. Um, there. There are. Sorry for being vague, but. Some programs, let's just say at the state level, when they're not running well. They fix them by creating another program. I'm not saying Massachusetts is notorious for doing that, but. I don't want to just take layers of things or a layer and suppress it with a new layer and then another layer. And make it look like we're making progress or doing something when all we're really doing is. Getting further and further away from the task at hand. So. The the master plan and Dan, what you're sharing tonight is very helpful because I I feel like, okay, as much as we thought it went by the wayside. Maybe by luck, maybe by not, we are chipping away at some of the items. Do we ha- I I I'm sorry to add a layer here, but do we have a document, one eight and a half by eleven? That kind of keeps track of master plan items, just bullet items like you just did. So that it's available to us and it's also a way for us to respond to um. Fellow residents and so on that might be criticizing and or asking or curious, cur- curious that we have. A document, a running document that we're addressing these things. Is it worth it or not?
Well, that's that's what, this came right out of um the master plan. This is a section outlining the items, who the responsible parties are, timeframes, funding. Overlapping with other master plan chapters. So I think. If we address that these are the action items, the goals that we're addressing, I think. That fits in with what you're speaking of.
All right. I I I didn't look at it, so I have to look at it, but um I just. I want to make sure that if there are in the in the next months, year or two. I want to make sure that within that master plan, if there are responsibilities of the planning board. That we are touching upon them and to the contrary, we're not being irresponsible just because most people forgot about the master plan and it's a thing of the past. It's really not. It's the road to the future. That's why the effort was put into it. So.
And I think if you look at, if you look at the things that he's highlighted, I mean, those are some of the things that we talked tonight.
Right.
I mean, there are five or whatever number it was, they're on here.
Yep. Okay, I I I'm comfortable with it and at any point in time, um. Where perhaps I'm not as vocal or 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 you you want to be more vocal, please do so because. I I just want to make sure that we're acting um on behalf of the town. And 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 doing the things that we kind of said we would do. So number six, water supply preservation. Kevin, I know you were big on this. We're all concerned with it.
Yep.
How do you guys feel about what's there?
Um, well, I I I think it goes beyond just drinking water. Uh. You know, it's it's rivers, it's it's our, the the uh Ponte Ganser Harbor. Um, and to some extent, you know, Buzzard's Bay, but that's that's pretty big. Um, but uh Ponte Ganser Harbor and the rivers, they're 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 ours, you know?
Right.
So it it's more than just the drinking water.
So should it say, um, you know, instead of, if it says water supply parentheses, should it say both salty and fresh? Preservation or do you want to, you want to clarify it more? Or do you want to get rid of the drinking water phrase and just leave overall preservation?
Yeah. Uh, I I I think water preservation is uh. It it cut is broad enough to to cover everything.
And in the parentheses, do you want them to remove the two words?
Water quality improvement.
And leave overall preservation as a natural resource?
Yes.
Okay. So, Dan, are you good with that? Remove drinking water and replace water quality comma overall preservation as a natural resource?
Yes.
Anybody else on item number six? All right, uh we'll move on to number seven, um for your information. Oh, sorry.
One quick question because our next meeting is June ninth and that's after the town meeting, okay? So um Dan's gonna prepare this and he's gonna make it in some color, pink, blue, yellow, green, I don't care. And who's gonna hand this out? I mean, I'm willing to stand there in the beginning of the meeting and hand some out and maybe we have.
With you.
Okay, Laurie and I will are willing to do it and hand this out as the people come in.
Yeah, and more than likely, I'll be there with you both.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Number seven, uh old business, new business.
Oh, we we were on actually four. It was just going to seven.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah.
So so we gotta go to number five for the minutes.
Uh, number five, minutes. Preferably a motion to accept and file. There we go.
Approved and filed.
Kevin Estes, was that you?
Uh, amongst others, yes.
Okay, so motion made to accept and file by Margaret Sweet. Margaret?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio?
Uh, I wasn't present, so I'll abstain.
Sorry about that. Lori?
Yes.
And Nick, yes. Number six, correspondence. Dan or Ross, do you have anything? Perhaps a motion?
That's usually just a motion to.
Yep.
Acknowledge and file.
Yeah.
Motion made by Kevin Estes to acknowledge and file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Great. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Helio?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Nick, yes. And number seven, old business, new business, uh Dan, any incoming ZVA applications?
The only new application we got was for an accessory structure. Uh needing a special permit to to add a water source, so nothing um of concern for planning.
Okay. And um ZVA decisions, legal ads, anybody looking to anything or have any comments?
Nothing new on that.
Okay, subcommittee reports? Anybody have anything? All right, moving on to the planners' report, master plan implementation and planning department updates. Dan?
Uh, just just talking about, I was planning on just kind of going over, we've already discussed, um just referencing to um. Two of the main items we pulled out of the master plan, the land use and the housing, um which outlines a few of the items we discussed. Um, a few of the things that we will be discussing through various committees and and approaching. Um, so if anybody's got, anything, any questions on anything I highlighted on that?
Uh, the new forty Y state program, Lana, can you explain that very briefly?
Yeah, ba- basically, it kind of, to to me, personally, I think this is something that could have great value. Um, this this is basically a starter home overlay community as a as opposed to just a. You know, a general overlay like a forty R that has everything. Um, the state hasn't given any. Any guidance yet or any any regulation procedures. So we're still waiting on that. That was one of the items we discussed at the housing plan production meeting. Um, Serped was hoping to get some information for us the next meeting, which I believe is June tenth. Um, hopefully we'll have some information on that, but I think um that forty Y program could hit a a lot of the. A lot of the goals in the master plan in regards to land use and housing. Um, so that's something I definitely think. Wish we should consider. Um, I'm also going on Wednesday. Um, to local planners seminar, um so it'll give me a chance to touch base with. Other local planners to see um if they've done anything with these overlay districts that we've talked about. Um, you know, Rochester and Lakeville have looked into it like we have, but. Again, not a lot of guidance coming from the state yet, so um. Give me a chance to see what other towns are looking at in regards to addressing some of these housing issues we have. Um, both from an affordable end, from the, from the starter home community end and the old fifty-five slash over sixty-two end, so. That'll be something I look forward to doing on Wednesday as well. Anybody else have any other, and any other comments on on the? Those outlined items for the master plan?
And I'm I'm very comfortable with them. I I I just, I'll just. Add that you or Ross or both should use your discretion on lighter agendas to. Get some of these items, perhaps one per light meeting, so that we can spend adequate time and make progress on it. Um, if the board feels okay with that, you know, let them use their discretion based on the agenda. Are we good with that?
I am, Nick. So anyway, it's gonna get done. We have to do that.
Right, we've got to do it.
Agreed, Nick.
Um, all right, that brings us to the chairs persons report and um. I I don't necessarily have a report for you uh between last meeting and now, but I just, I want to share a few things. Um, I'm grateful that Laurie's on the board and such experience and tenure comes back at a time while I'm here. So um I think we're set up as a team and we are sincere in our effort. And all of our consideration that we make for the town. So I I truly believe that this particular group of people as a board that we can collaborate and make progress, which. Quite frankly, is the purpose of a board, right? So I look forward to the time together. Um. I want to just share the fact that. I want to get over this hurdle of architectural guidelines. I I do want to reach out to another board. I want to create an opportunity for discussion. I'm not sure of the process or how that's gonna go, but. But this needs to get put to rest. Both, both the chatter and um and the perception, because for the average person that doesn't know the details. Excuse me, perception is reality. And the bad news for that person, there is no reality here. You know, it was just a guideline. And quite frankly, it's a crutch that's being used and the finger's being pointed at the planning board. And and the planning board's contribution as a a guideline by a member is not the reason something didn't go as planned. So I just want to make it clear that if we're if we're gonna be the crutch for somebody else or another group. That I suggest they come and speak to me either as an individual or to us as a board for one reason, because it's not fair to all of us. So I will stand up for us as a board and for each and every one of you, and I'm going to seek. Who I can speak to and the process by which that can happen to clarify this issue. I do not want to have the feeling that I have today, that I've had for weeks now on June ninth at our next meeting. Um, with that, I really look forward to the priority list. I I feel it's objective. I I feel it's objective in nature and we have targeted work for us, and I think when we focus on our targets, we can hit them. And if we do so, it's gonna be good for us and the town, so unless anybody else has uh anything to share.
It's just one thing, we we briefly skipped over planning department updates. I I did at the last selectmen's meeting, um, I did. Give a little quick presentation um on housing concerns as I see them coming forward and. One of the other things I did bring up was the architectural guidelines. Um, in misconception that occurred over a specific site. Um, so I did bring that up to the select board, just so the boards aware. I don't know if anybody.
Appreciate.
That meeting, um, but I did feel it was appropriate to to comment on that, to try to. Clear some of the air on what really happens on that project, recommended to, if there are any questions. Please send them my way and I'll be more than happy to discuss any of these concerns with any future and potential developers here in town.
That site's already under agreement again.
Excellent.
Dan, I did see your, um, I did see your presentation at the select board. Um, thank you for doing that. Second.
Much appreciated, Dan.
Dan, did they ask you to go?
Yes.
Okay.
I got an invitation.
Was it, was it for any specific reason, Dan?
It was for um housing.
Oh.
Just to kinda, what do what what do we see? Um, there was a. A employee meeting, I guess you would say, um, and wanna kinda just um. Go around the room and discuss what you're seeing in your department. Um, and um. Ross was there at that meeting and one of the things that came up was about the current trend is for multi-use higher-density housing. Um, so um the acting um town administrator ran that meeting, so. He advised the uh select board that maybe they'd wanna hear something on that, so. Kinda gave him just an overview on what we're seeing and potential going forward.
Dan, how well received was your? Um, defense or or statement or support as it relates to the issue that we're having?
Um, I think it was. I think it 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 maybe, I don't know if it say opened eyes, but I think it gave a different perspective so people could. Um, not just hear the chatter, but could hear some more actual fact behind what happened, so I think it was a, it was a positive. Um, for everybody.
Thank, thank you for doing that.
My takeaway from watching it, I I did not attend, but I watched it. Uh, my takeaway was, uh, first of all, Dan did a great job. Um, and and secondly, I was, I was surprised about uh how little. Uh, uh, I I guess, eh, how inaccurate some of the assumptions were about the, what 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 it actually transpired. Eh, and and uh it was almost laughable at at some points. Uh, but I I will say that, you know, we 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 do have uh some friends on on the board that like to straighten things out. Um, eh, or they at least do their best.
Right. Well, I thank everyone and Dan, thank you again uh for your effort, especially in regard to that subject. Um. Nine fourteen, anybody wanna make the magic motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Lori and seconded by Kevin. Lori?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Helio?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. I thank everyone.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Have a good one.
Yes, thanks for meeting until June ninth.
Yeah, we'll see you at town meeting now.
I will, I will be there.
Okay.